I did say one comment. I'm concerned, I think I let this email Mr. President. David hasn't resigned yet. And I'm just concerned that, I mean, I'm pretty sure he's moving. But, you don't know yet because he hasn't moved in as a lot of resignation yet. So I'm concerned that we're going to go through this process and, you know, anything can happen as you know. So I'm just questioning why we're doing this when we don't have a board member who's resigned yet.
Well, the reason frankly is that once David told us his intentions and the conversations I've had with him, it's definitely a go. And my concern is that when we, when he does give his final date, we have 30 days. Subtract out weekends, that gives us 20 days. And I'm very concerned that if we started this process after David's actual resignation was received, that we'd be cutting short the opportunity that we have for the public to be involved as far as meetings and as far as the whole process goes.
Well, and I understand that, but I have two comments to that. Number one, I mean, I, we've done this before in the past. I know you were involved in a prior selection and I was involved in a prior selection too. I was candidate myself. And we were always able to do it. But my, my comment to that also is that, you know, I appreciate having these kind of meetings, but I wish that the public could get more involved by having a meeting that was taped. Because I know that it's not, that we, I see a lot of people in the audience here today, but this meeting isn't taped as you know. So I would just request that we start doing this in our regular board meetings so that more people can become involved with it. I know it's a long process, but I think the public would be happier if we could do it in a meeting, number one, that was taped so they could watch it, number two, that they could participate in.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
My, my comment is the same as what I emailed you. I appreciate being proactive. I don't have a problem with having some discussions about this before David actually leaves, but I object to having a special meeting when we're going to have a regular meeting on Tuesday that more members of the public would likely be able to attend or watch the live stream. I think it's important to have the public involved in this process and be able to see all of it. And the excess of special meetings make it difficult for them to be involved.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Well, in my discussion with David, he said he'd have to meet by May 20, not to move. And then he's absolutely moving this year. We're looking for a superintendent as well. We have a lot of meetings. And so I think all we're doing here is setting up the process and we won't actually push the button until he officially is gone. Exactly. Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as written? Well, let's do a roll call. Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ju?
Yes.
Mrs. Pappas?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mrs. St. John?
No, I think it should be on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. So we have six, one. Let's move forward.
Five, one.
I'm sorry, five, one. I apologize. My math is off. It's a little late in the day. Items for discussion: board member appointment, applicant qualifications. Mr. Cotton forwarded everybody a, what I thought was a very good draft draft as far as the qualifications go. You want to walk us through that, Mr. Cotton?
Sure. I just took this from the MASB guideline which should come up with qualifications. And obviously, we're first draft, but coming up with who has an access to the school district. And this would be who could send an application in, retired staff members of the district. Well, first off, registered development district, that's by law. Would that comes being at least 18 years of age as well as who has enrolled in the district. Been looking at a resident of the district for at least 10 months, the last 10 months. And then falling into one of the following categories, either of any of them, retired staff member of the district, graduated Ghostpoint North, graduated Ghostpoint South, former school board member, or parent of a former graduate or currently enrolled student of the district.
Do you want to tackle these one section at a time?
We can, as in qualifications.
Like, for instance, the qualifications. Does anybody have any objections to what Mr. Cotton has outlined?
I have a concern actually that these are more restrictive than what is required to actually run for election for the board. Are we allowed to impose further restrictions on who can apply than what the election does?
Yes.
I, I just don't see why it's necessary. I would definitely prefer someone who has one of these connections, but I think there are other ways for somebody to have a connection to the district. And we wouldn't necessarily want to exclude people. I, I don't see why it's necessary to add anything more than being registered to vote and a resident for the last 10 months. Definitely just the way.
What were the items that you would want to add, mention? There's things that you think, other items, what are those other items?
No, I'm saying that I don't, I don't want to be exclusive for who can run. There are a lot of different kinds of people in our school district. There are some people who don't have children, who have been very involved with the schools for other reasons. And while they might not be preferred for us once we get through, through the review process, because we want people who have, I don't want to just off, straight off the bat, say that they can't even apply. I don't think that's necessary to make these qualifications more restrictive than people who could have campaigned and run for votes.
And if I could, I, I agree with that. I think, although I think this is, it's, it's a good start, I, I don't think putting things like graduate of Ghostpoint North or South should be a requirement. There's five people on this board that did not grow up in Ghostpoint. So, and I, I think that to sort of pigeonhole ourselves into people that graduated from North or South is sort of picking a lot of people out that could otherwise be very qualified. I, I'm just not sure why we would put that in there.
Well, I think everybody on the board would fall into one of these categories.
Yeah, falls in one of the following categories.
Yeah, I disagree with that. But I guess I, I agree with trustee St. John. I'm not sure why we're, I mean, I think if you're qualified and you're interested, we can certainly ask those questions of people and weed them out. But I mean, by sort of saying that that's a qualification, I understand it's one of five, but it just seems like we are giving undue influence to people just because they're a graduate of North or South.
Well, I don't, I don't read it as a, I mean, if a parent of a former graduate or currently enrolled student of the district doesn't mean they graduated from North or South.
Well, it's, it's listed into five categories, falls into one of the following categories.
Right.
And there's two of them, so that's two of five that's a graduate of North or South.
But they don't have to be a graduate of North or South. They could be a parent of a former graduate or currently enrolled student of the district. It's one of those five, not all of the five. Is that what, am I right on that, Mr. Cotton? Is that what you're reading?
Yes.
Is there a bullet point you'd like to add?
I, I just don't think we need bullet points. I think that if you are a member of the community, then you should come in and give your credentials and we should take that into consideration. But I don't think we should right off the bat say you should fall into one of these five categories in order to qualify to run for school board. And the thing is, Mr. President, many times what you've said is important that we do is we take care of the 90% of the people who don't have kids in the district. So there might be somebody who moved in here as a grandparent, not necessarily of a child. Or you could be a grandparent and you want to run for school board. I just, I don't know why we're putting these into categories. And what if you're a grandparent of a, of a child, but you don't fall into any of these But you've been super involved and volunteered for the PTO, go on field trips, you go to every school board meeting. I guess I just don't understand why we have to make these categories.
I don't disagree with them. Why would you say that? I mean, technically, I mean, everybody's a taxpayer in the district, everybody pays taxes for the schools, so that should make them eligible by that standard as the taxpayers support the public school system. But I think, you know, I have concerns over the number of people that are choosing to get involved in school boards and city councils with very little longevity in a community. And I think it's, it's something that used to not happen. And I, I think we should, it's a partial term of a year. This person's only going to serve a year of a term. And we're in the middle of a, of very important superintendent search. So to have somebody that has some connection to the district, I mean, would we be happy with a ligate parent making decisions for our school? Or a charter school parent making decisions for our public school? They're, they're direct competitors. Maybe their intentions, I'm not saying that they would be bad intentioned, but I'm just saying, I think that having somebody to fill a year in a, in a role where it's a partial term and we are in the middle of a very important, I, I think it would be nice to have somebody that has a connection to our district and a more direct familiarity too. I mean, you know, when you've been in the district for, or graduated, you have a direct familiarity with the buildings, with the processes, with the education that they went through. So I mean, I do think, it's only one, one category, but I think we should be looking for people with experience. I mean, I don't know any job where you would hire somebody that has no familiarity with the entity that they claim to want to represent.
Well, back to the original question though, is there, I mean, are we getting into some legal issues where there's legal qualifications for board members and we put these kind of stipulations out there when that's not what the statute requires? Have you looked into that?
From what I've talked to Mr. Mack, it is perfectly acceptable. Mrs. Truitt, you got a comment?
I just think that these are very minimal qualifications and if you have a proven love for a district. But if you want, if there was something to add to that, I don't know how important. If, if someone really wants to apply, okay, I'd let them apply. And actually, I want to pass out, I made a mock, just a sample candidate application just for, you know, just to see what people think. You know, that would be, if someone is, if someone's a ligate parent and has no connection to the district and they want to apply, then, great, I don't know what would be the motivation to pick them, but if they want to apply and go through the process, then, that's fine. I mean, I don't, no, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
That's more where, where I am. I, I do think probably we would choose someone who has one of these qualifications, but I think that's for the review process, to go through and say, well, I don't know why that person has a connection, I'm not seeing, you know, and weed it out through the applications, not from the get-go say, you can't apply. Because by saying these are the qualifications, we're saying if you don't fall into one of these categories, you can't apply. And I can think of a few people who would be good, school board members who are, for example, foster parents of currently enrolled students in the district. So they have a really-
Well, they're not qualified because you have a-
Well, they're not parents, they're foster parents, so they go technically in the hands of guardianship, right? But that, they would read it and be like, oh, well, I can't apply. So I don't think we need that in the qualifications. We just, in the review process, we decide if they have the connection that we're looking for. Because I, I understand what you're saying, that we want somebody who has a connection to the district.
So are you saying that, Mrs. St. John, under review process, we could have a category that says priority will be given to-
Yeah.
-these applicants that have the following?
That could be part of the review process to prioritize. And then for circumstances like that where there's a foster parent, we would say, oh, that counts. We know that counts, right? But if people would self-select and think that they couldn't apply.
Does anybody have an objection to doing that?
I know. And then, and then when you're, when you're asking questions, right, then how familiar are you with our district? I think that would stay an important question on the application, because then they're going to have to self-reflect on why do you want to, why do you want to be here?
So it falls into one of the following categories and moves to the review process of qualifications, that basically you're registered to vote in a district and a resident of the district for at least 10 months.
Yeah, that's the bare minimum.
Okay. Okay, so let's move on to review process then. So we have review process, we're putting in those categories as a preference. Is there any, adding grandparents and foster parents, right? Okay. Is there any other changes to the review process that Mr. Cotton has outlined that anybody would like?
Can I just ask, why did you pick me?
I'm starting to think you have to start winnowing this down and doing more than eight hours of interviews. Since at some point you have to pick one.
Well, I, my, my question really is that, I mean, we haven't determined what the process is yet. And when I went through it, we had legal women voters come in and we had actually two different sessions and I think it was two hours each. And I think there was a total of 12. So I guess since we haven't determined what the process is yet, I guess why are we limiting it to eight?
Well, we're determining the process right here. That's what we're doing.
Sure, but we haven't made that decision yet as a board.
No, yep. This is a suggestion.
Okay. Anything other changes to item two? One's twice, okay. Other than removing that section down?
Yeah, other than adding that premise where we give it to people who have been at the end of the time.
Falls into one of those categories, okay. So then, let's go on to item three. Can you walk us through that, Mr. Cotton?
The review process and the interview and selection process.
The, let's go through the interview and selection process. But nobody had any other issues regarding item two, review, is that correct? Everybody's good on that?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's go on to number three then.
Okay, up to eight applicants will be interviewed in alphabetical order by last name. This assumes, though, what my understanding is we have a meeting before this one where we would go through and pick the applicants. Okay. That's what I have under number two. But going to number three, we have up to eight applicants will be interviewed in alphabetical order by last name. Each applicant will be given one minute to introduce themselves. Each applicant will be given no more than 60 minutes for their interview. Each board member will have no more than 10 minutes to question an applicant. However, board members may yield their time to a board member. Board members may stop an applicant that answered and move on to another question. Applicants may ask clarification questions only, they may not question board members. The president may stop the clock or add additional time for administrative reasons. Following interviews, there will be an option for public comment. Following public comment, members of the board will discuss applicants. And then was the first choice and second choice for appointment, assigning two points for each first choice and one point for each second choice. And the president will recommend for appointment, they'll appeal for most points of the board then voting on that appointment.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on how that's outlined?
I guess my, I think it seems like an interesting way to interview people, but I would prefer doing this with legal women voters, because I think you, somebody sent us an email, I don't remember who, that it might be awkward, because we're going to be asking, you know, personal questions of people that were eventually going to be on the board with us. It just seems like it might be more unbiased if we had legal women voters do this. Where if somebody, I mean, I'm not opposed to us coming up with questions, because after all, it's going to be the person on our board. But wouldn't it be better if we had somebody that was unbiased to sort of do it in a fair and type way? So it would be, seem less like a board member was going after a member that was up there, an applicant that was up there trying to get on the board? Because I know that's the way it's been done the last two selection processes.
Any other comments?
I got a question about this. It says each applicant will be given no more than 60 minutes for their interview. And then each board member will have no more than 10 minutes to question an applicant. So is that 10 minutes a questioning part of the 60 minutes for an interview?
Yes.
So we, if we each use our full 10 minutes, are we then going into more than an hour for the applicant? How would we work that?
Where's one six of us?
Some 10. Oh, this data's not here.
At this point, by this time-
By this time trustee promote not be here. Yep, that's where mine was.
I thought the same thing though.
But, I mean, couldn't we come up with questions and then have a neutral party ask the same question to every applicant? Because I'm afraid that, for instance, let's just say somebody gets up there and, you know, I, I can ask a question of somebody, but then I, I don't get to ask that question of another person due to time constraints, right? So then, the same candidate might not be asked the same question.
But it'll go around, so, so maybe you can read all the same questions to the same candidate if you choose to do so. Maybe, maybe it's someone from, maybe it's the ligate parent that has, you know, maybe I want to kind of go heavy on questions about that instead of, you know, the parent that's been the PTO leader for 20 years.
Right, yeah, I mean, I do see your point, but I'm just wondering, it just almost seems like there might be some sort of like inherent bias in the candidates not being asked the same question. Like, for instance, at the legal women voters, there was a forum and you were, I think it was the same thing, you labeled one through six, and then the same question was asked. And then the second question, the number two person would go, and then the third, the third question, number three person would start. Everybody would get the same question. And then you'd have the opportunity to, you know, get the same answer, or an answer from the same question. But I think, to your point, we could certainly make that a question. Like, for instance, if we got applicants and you could say, you know, what's your involvement and why do you want to do this? I mean, certainly I would think that that would be something-
How would you do that in a league format?
What's that?
How would you do that if you're following the league format?
Well, I mean, I think we would just have to make that a question. Like, for instance, like, on Jenny's background information, how familiar are you with the district? Tell us the number of years and your residence history, and that would be a question. I'm just concerned about us as board members asking questions.
I think as a board member, I'd rather ask the questions, because I want to get to know the candidate at hand, right? And it's going to, it's going to vary. I mean, I felt like legal women's voters when I was part of that, asking questions. And when you didn't get to know me as much as you could by, you know, asking specific questions to the candidates. So I'd prefer to-
Well, there was also- Sorry.
What's your thoughts, Susan?
Well, is there a way we could at least have all the candidates answer some of the same questions so that we, we get a baseline kind of comparison to everybody? I mean, if, like, I feel like that would be maybe the way to start and then to maybe take step two.
Well, hopefully, I would say.
Maybe a questionnaire.
Questionnaire, right.
Right. And this, just for public record, is just suggestions, right? I just put it together to, where my head works.
Just looking over it, I, I know I'm going to be ahead, but I like yours because it's more open-ended. That was, that was my concern with the one that trustee Cotton had. It's, it's just kind of like yes, no, or, or numbers for answers. And I like the open-ended questions to give, you know, and also because we would want somebody who can explain themselves, right? Express themselves verbally or in, in writing. So I, I like a lot of these questions.
I do too. And this looks very similar to the one that was submitted, I think, when President Sumterfield stepped down. This looks very, very similar, your application.
I didn't even look at his.
Oh, I mean, yeah. I don't know.
Let's keep on, let's keep on item three, get through item three. If we're going to tweak this, are you, my hearing that we want to have a set series of questions, but I mean, I don't understand why those aren't being covered by the questionnaire of the standard questions. Why would we be asking those again? I mean, I'd be interested in asking any question to any candidate.
Would these, would the responses to these applications be publicly available? Is that part of it? Or is that like personal identification?
No.
That'd be subject to FOIA.
Public FOIA.
I guess, I guess the concern then would be, oh, yeah, it's a matter of time.
Well, so, what, it happened the last time, I think they uploaded them to the website so that you could look at everybody's application.
Yeah, and we could just black out partner bills or any, any actual personal identifying information.
Didn't someone say, to number candidates? Was that someone? Was that your suggestion?
Yeah, for the review process, it says in the review process that we would do that when we're just going over the applicants who we decide to interview. If there's more than eight, that way we're not saying like, oh, Adam is no good, I don't want to interview him, you know?
Right, it's a good idea.
So that's what it already says in the review process, but that's what we're doing.
And that was taken from the suggestions for superintendent search. I think I should be.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, but then in the interview process, we're actually interviewing them. So we can, yeah, so we can have the application publicly available so that people can see these answers. I, I think what trustee Warden's getting at is that the, asking the same questions to the same candidates, since it's something we do in the election, is kind of expected for that perception of bias. But if we do have all these answers, if they've answered all these things and the same, had the same questions, people can read them on their own time.
I think it'll make the interviews more efficient.
And then the questions would be more-
Individual to their-
Individual to that person.
Exactly.
Just like, yeah, I was recruited for everyone, I would interview each candidate very differently based on, yeah.
What? Maybe while we're going over the applications, if we find that, like, we want to know from everyone something about the finances and stuff, we can each assign ourselves to, like, okay, Colleen, you need to ask, you know, something about the district finances. You need to ask something about, how would you do a budget, you know, like, give, so everybody asks one of the same question. If we, if while we're in the review process, we think that that would be a good idea. So we, that's something we could adjust later.
And I think that's something we did when we, when we did our superintendent search. Like, everybody was assigned a couple of questions, that, you know, the same questions for each candidate.
Is there anything else under three as far as the methodology that we want to change?
Yeah, I, I know we've talked about this before, but just the ranking, but I don't see a way around that. But it, it will be difficult if then the first one gets on the board was ranked, they know that they were ranked last by a couple of board members, but I, for open meetings act purposes, I don't, I don't know if we can get around that.
I thought we only ranked the first two.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's not like we'll be giving somebody like a last place or something, right?
Right. Okay.
So you're like thinking your top candidate.
Yeah, and that's what's been done in the past as well.
Okay, so we're good on three otherwise? Okay, let's go into the questionnaire. We've got Sean's list and Jenny's list too, so we want to work off of.
I also-
Also.
Yes.
Calling.
Well, yeah, I got mine from Rochester Community Schools. They also have a big incentive. Mine is, yeah.
I did look at yours, thank you. So I took, that's what I started doing, I looked at the one you had and then what you had sent in to the board and combined, that's why it's all started the same as what you did, Sean.
I don't really think we should add whatever everybody wants to add. If anybody's got anything they want to add to anything, which do you want to use as the baseline?
Right, I, I think working off of the one trustee did hand it out as the baseline, just because having the, the open-ended questions as the base is-
Did this, did trustee Jitch pick up every one of the Rochester questions that you liked, Colleen?
Oh, I'm looking at it right now. But she, Jenny said she looked at it, so I'm sure that-
Yeah, so let's take a minute.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I, I do think it's important just to, I mean, I know that some of these questions are hard, but we probably should ask about the, whether or not somebody has a criminal background. I know that's a very personal question, but I think it's kind of important.
So that would be under background.
On the top, yeah, right in the very background information.
Yes, well, and it just asks if you're, not if you've had any crimes, but if you're a convicted felon. I mean, quite frankly-
Well, should we take that as one of the criteria, maybe, number one?
Oh, yeah, obviously.
You can vote if you're, yeah, you can still vote. But I mean, you're not allowed, like, I know that for field trips, when I fill out the things, you have to put in there that, you know, whether or not you are.
Well, trustee Warden, do we want to put that as a qualification? Because is that already a qualification to run for board that you can't have a felony?
I don't think it is.
Really? Oh, I thought it was.
When we're done, do we need to run this through the lawyer? And then you will put in, you need to have that-
Once we're done with this, I've got to send it tomorrow.
So, so ask him if that needs to be the first step or the last step, everything, ask about felonies.
So, you know, you put you in at the very last thing, can we ask our legal counsel to write a statement saying something about safeguarding personal information or, you know, whatever? That would all fall under I can-
Okay, so let's go, first of all, let's make sure we included the questions that trustee Warden's concerned about as far as Rochester goes. Are those covered in Mrs. Ju's document? Let's see, Warden's checking it.
I think there's just, there's a few that are just a little bit more detailed.
Okay, so which ones of those do you want to add?
Well, if you just want to check here. I guess I would probably want to add for, if you seek reelection when the appointment expires.
Okay, got it.
And then I guess I would also add a little bit more of the detailed question about-
That's Rochester number four.
About number three, which I think Jenny incorporated part of it in, but just, um-
So, I've got Rochester four.
And I, I just want to ask a question of that, that question I did put in, because I thought, like, you know, Ted Kudle, he always says, why, if you ask a question, what are you gonna do with that information, right? And I just thought, does it matter if they are gonna run or not? Like, is that a negative or is that a positive, if they're gonna run for reelection?
I had a question about that too, because wasn't there somebody-
That would get us into a weird-
Wasn't there somebody who was appointed and said they weren't, and promised they weren't gonna run, and then they ran again, and?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, so-
Twenty-five, thirty years ago.
So, do we even want to, like, make them promise one way or the other, and then, and then have them change their minds, like?
That is a lot I didn't about, that I didn't have to-
Yeah, just, just because I, I see what trustee Judd's saying.
I mean, I guess I can just ask that in my own question, I'm, I'm just curious, I think that it's very important to know.
I know, it's good information to have, but then they can change their minds, and then we have to be there with them.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so is that in, Rob?
I, I would like it in, but, I mean, I'm, I'm not set on it, I would just like to know.
Would that be a positive or a negative, though, too?
Depends.
I mean, you know, it's a commitment, and I would like to know if they're, if they're interested in, you know, doing this for the long haul.
Well, I mean, the long haul, it's a four-year term if they go out for reelection, and, I mean, they, once, I mean, if they take the one-year appointment, you know, they would have the same decision to make that any incumbent whose seat is up in the election has, and they have till whatever that July deadline is to make that decision. So, I don't see why, you know, we would put that, you know, restriction on, does it matter? Because-
It's not a restriction, Lisa, it's just something I'm interested in, just like, you know, I, I think some of the questions on Sean's questionnaire, I mean, some of the stuff I wouldn't really be interested in, like, what letter that they, you know, was for, that they lettered in, or their club participation in school, I'm not really that interested in that, but I completely respect somebody that does, they're interested in that.
Yeah, put it in, I think that's-
Put it in, that's fine.
I just think we should, whatever questions you lay once in, in.
Right, exactly.
Because-
Why not?
Why not?
If it saves us time during the interviews, if you're gonna ask the questions anyway.
I know, if they don't want to answer, they don't have to.
Right, okay, so we are adding that, you said something about item three in Rochester, what was that? Something, you said Jenny didn't cover totally or something?
Um, well, I think you did ask about, um-
Read it, I can tell you the words.
About just if, making sure that we know, that they know how much time this takes off, and that-
I didn't put that, hold on, I'll look that up too.
You know, that really should be something that we, that's gotta go in a preamble almost to the application.
Yeah, and see what the good time-
Just the time commitment. I have it somewhere.
Yeah, we'll put that right into preamble, as that, here's the, in fact, I've seen Rochester, one of the schools did this job in, in the-
Yeah.
The Rochester-
They recommend that.
Okay, so we'll put that right in the beginning before they even start pressing the buttons.
And then, I guess the only, then I would, I would also add to, although Jenny did touch on it, just the, the stuff about the, whether or not there's an economic or business relationship that could be a conflict of interest, basically.
Okay, so conflict, okay.
And I, I think the wording was nice about that.
The Rochester wording?
Sure.
And what, what number was that in Rochester?
Number two.
Number two, got it, okay. Anything else that we're adding to Jenny's document?
Um, under background information, can we have, kind of, not even a full resume, but just like, current job, educational history, because people like to put that, you know, they got a degree from here or there, and especially, you know, some, some of them are especially useful to the board, when somebody's got an accounting degree, or somebody's a former educator, they'd be able to say, and then it might out-
So, that's Mr. Cotton's question eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
Yeah, so just kind of putting that in there, just, um, educational slash work experience, yeah, brief, like, it doesn't need to be their full resume, but, and also, if we know what job they have now, we can then ask in the interview questions, like, oh, you're, you're a trauma surgeon, will you have time to come to a special meeting? For example, you know, that would be something that would be difficult for them, or maybe if they're a freelancer, they should have time to come to a special meeting, so, that would be helpful too.
Okay, so if we pick up eleven, twelve, and thirteen out of Sean's document, we're gonna look at cover just, I mean, they, they might have information we don't even think is useful, and we see it, and we know what it is. Okay.
So, I think having their degree in school.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do you, do you like, um, doing it this way, or, or fill in the blank? Like, do you, is it, do you see it on the computer to be?
Well, it's gonna end up being a Google form of sorts, and there'll be some free-form fields, so we're gonna need to do a little both, actually accommodate these questions.
Who in the district puts this together?
I'll find this video.
Yeah, I'll, we'll tab on it and put it together. Okay.
And we're gonna create a page, an entire page on the district Friday, that's like, but we'll need a good final copy of all the things we discussed.
Yeah, exactly, we'll put this together, Chris.
Always taking some notes, you know?
Okay, we'll put this together, I'll get it to you guys, and bless it with Mark, make sure we've got all our bases covered.
And then we'll pass it back to you for a final lesson.
Yeah, and then, I think it's important that, especially we spell out that, like, day two, this application gets posted, it's open through day five or day eight, or whatever, you know, whatever blockout calendar we have, that we know we've got twenty days, twenty business days, so, I think it's important that we lay that out to the public so they can see it, and, okay, so, basically what we're doing then is we're taking, well, let me ask you a question, is there any reason we can't meld what you have, Sean, and what Jenny has, and cover all those? Is there any, if, if you look at Jenny's, Jenny's, if you look at Jenny's and Sean's documents, are there any additional questions that aren't listed on those two that I, anybody would like?
We could just give everybody a week to add, that's fine.
We could tack it to the agenda on Tuesday to, find, approve the questionnaire.
Okay, so that means-
If you want to approve the qualifications and procedures tonight, and now on Tuesday for the questionnaire, you can send out a, um, copy of what we've talked about today, and that if any of us come up with questions over the weekend.
So, then, when are we gonna post it?
Well, do-
If I don't get, if I don't get anybody's input all over the weekend-
Do we need to post it in advance of trustee Brava resigning?
Well, if we're gonna discuss it at a meeting, we're gonna hyperlink to it, so the public can see it.
It might be nice to, um, allow members of the public to come in at the board meeting about-
So, I guess it can be a first read, I, I don't think trustee Brava's, like, moving away before the next meeting.
I think it's, I, I, just, I think it's us independent, just, if I, yeah, because it's gotta be close.
There's always like thirty days to close, and, so.
So, let's come up with a timeline, when do you guys, when is the preference as far as nailing down this application for?
I don't think we should have it ready for this meeting, I mean, I don't think, because we're, there's a significant time gap between Tuesday's meeting and October, the next meeting in October, so if we're gonna de-discuss this at a public meeting, I think it's, we need to do it on Tuesday, um, and have it ready, so it's ready.
I think if you post what we've discussed today, and then we would just be amending it on Tuesday to say, like, oh, I thought of this question, can we amend it to, you know, we'll only have one or two questions, and we may have any-
Why don't we just have it so everybody gets the questions into me by Friday?
Okay.
And then if I have them by Friday, I can incorporate them into something that can put it online on Monday.
Well, let's run them by, I thought we were gonna run them by-
Oh, they'll run by Mark, so I'll send it to Mark, and, so Monday, Tuesday, we'll get it blessed, and then, and then we have something we can look at, um, you know, that's set at least as final as we're gonna get it for Tuesday night, and we'll add this to the agenda for Tuesday.
Just a thought on the, the whole criminal background check part of it, um, and I don't know what the legality is, that's a, Mr. Mackinary question, but, I mean, would it be prudent to have an expectation that somebody applying for the board would pass the same background check that we asked our parents to take in the district? I mean, in most school districts, anybody who is involved in a school, coming for a class party, has to pass the right one, that's the rule.
With multiple children, it's the same thing here.
Because you do-
Do you have an iChat process?
Have we been cleared by yet?
iChat?
Mm-hmm.
No, we have not, but I mean-
You're not volunteering at school, though.
You're not volunteering, so you have to, I, I, obviously, if you volunteer-
Here's a question, did you fill out when you filled in your, um, your case of registration?
Yeah, I mean, as a parent, I did, but did, has, have board, like, is that the thing you do for board members?
I don't think it's through iChat process.
No.
The reason I say that is because, you know, I mean, the, it, it, because it occurred to me, as you were just, you know, mentioning the criminal background check, who has theoretically easy access to be in decisions with our kids, would be a board member, right? So, it just seems like, you know, if that's, if a parent in the district to come in their kid's class party or go on a field trip has to have an iChat, it just seems like, well, maybe that might be a expectation for a board member, just an idea.
I would like the policy committee at their next meeting to, like, maybe trustee Cotton add that to the agenda, to have board, like, include board members in the iChat process, because most of us probably do it anyway, as parents, but since not everybody's-
That's a Mackinary question. I don't know that elected, you can require that, I don't think it's one of the items of being, I don't know, that's a-
Well, I don't, not in order to be elected, but just, like, because we do go into the schools for a lot of things, and, like, the-
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying.
The kids' events and stuff, and if it came out that one of the board members had a criminal back, I, I understand trustee Pop's concern, it's not something that we're needing for, so, but, that would be a policy, that, or an administrative guideline, right? To-
But I don't think you can require, like, there's, there's statutes for certain elections, like, I mean, for instance, in Congress, you can be a felon, it's, it's fine, um, so I don't, I mean, we can certainly do that for this, but I don't think we can do that for people that run for office.
No, you can do it for an appointment, you can't do it for a watch.
Yeah, but not for, yes, yeah, so I don't know.
Well, it wouldn't prevent you from being a board member, but it would prevent you from, uh, being invited to things where we are interacting with second graders, right? Like, that's, that's what I'm thinking about.
But I think parents that are felons are in there, aren't you?
I don't know about that, because, like, when you-
Too big to film, so.
I don't think so.
No, there are some things on the iChat, some things come up you are not allowed to do within our school system.
Right.
So, no.
And some teachers dress up-
Those people probably don't fill out the form to be the field trip driver, or they do.
They do.
They do, it's like-
I kind of forgot I did this, like, yeah, iChat didn't forget.
Yeah, it'll probably never come up for a board member, but it's good to have the policy on hand so that you can say, oh, yep, all the board members are cleared too, because teachers are generously inviting us to a lot of the kids' events, and I'm, I'm sure it would make parents more comfortable to know that, yes, literally every adult who comes could be in there, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, when you have a, let's say we have, Mr. Fisher has his Coney Island at Ferry School, every parent that walks into that room is not being iChatted.
They're-
Every parent that attends, every parent that attends, that-
They should be, they come to our school-
Not back to school night, you know, you're constantly do that.
The kids are known, and when you have kids that are around, you have to have people who are coming into our school system iChatted.
Well, then, I, I, I mean, you don't know, you don't know-
My husband's not iChating, he's just volunteered.
Shows up for Mr. Fisher's Coney Island that day?
So, I can only speak for, like, the, being a person that makes it, like, when we would send out, we would know beforehand who was coming to our parties, and then we would have them be iChatted to make sure they were safely around our kids, if not, anybody was following around our kids. We try to keep everybody safe, and make sure that they do go through the iChat process. If we go to Detroit Zoo or anywhere else, like, we have all those parents iChatted for a reason, to keep everybody safe, it's one of our, our procedures.
You might want to check that, because I would be shocked if that was happening, because, I mean, parents decide at the last second, hey, I'm gonna go and have a Coney Island with Mr. Fisher, they don't sign up ahead of time for that.
I'll check for Perry, you're right, maybe, imagine the situation where people are coming in, and, um-
It's like, they operate it like a restaurant, you know, just, you feel like going there, you go there and have a Coney Island.
Yep.
You don't sign up or get a reservation ahead of time, it's not, it's not tennis.
It might, it might be a change this year, Coney Island.
Okay.
So, this motherfucker, they heard it, like-
I just ruined their business.
Let's test some things out, basically, with, with president.
I just tried to-
They're a loophole of those.
I, I think, and, and I think you're, you're right in the, you know, the aspect that there's a lot of school events where we have grandparents and extended family that come, and not everyone's been iChatted, that's absolutely a fact, right? But, but as far as the parents in the district and, and the schools I worked at, the parents have to be iChat cleared in order to come into the school to volunteer or to-
So, let's, let's get back to what we're here for.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything that's involving iChat that's gonna go into this application?
I think we should ask Mark if we do, you know, that should be a more question.
Okay, I've got it on my Mark list, but is there anything other than that?
Um, just to, like, think of the Google forms, um, I don't, it says, please limit your response to three hundred words for most of them, which I think is a good idea, but I don't know if the Google forms can do words, I think it's characters usually.
We may have to use forms back then.
No, it can't, you can just do characters instead, you can be like, limit your response to fifty hundred characters, and it'll automatically truncate it for you, and then the, the, one of the ones under community engagement, if it's a responsibility, doesn't have that, so just make sure that that's added in.
Got it. Let me take a second.
I'm sure Miss Beal will figure out how to best do it.
Okay. Anybody else going once, twice? Okay, so we have our, we've covered the items we wanted to discuss, we have time for public comments, do we have any public comment forums?
Well, before that, I think we should decide how long to keep the application open.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, well, let's work backwards from day twenty. Day twenty, you want to have your appointment done, business day twenty, okay? So, if you work backwards from that-
And we may have less days depending on-
You got holidays?
And we don't want to push it out to the end, doesn't need to be, could be set in the middle, or whatever, right?
So, explain, so the, the resignation comes in, to get the official resignation, the clock starts ticking immediately.
Right, so day two, the form goes up, you're only up for five days.
Five business days, and hopefully it'll be over a weekend.
Okay, so we're, we're just semi-calender days, we've got thirty days total calendar days, so, we have day two, app is up, day seven, app closes, then, the next thing is gonna be our initial filtering, okay? So, are we gonna do that at, it'll be hard to time that, so if it's, if it's a specific work we need to-
And working around the superintendent's-
Superintendent's search too.
So, that, that I do understand will need a special meeting for.
Okay, so we have, after day seven, the app closes, then, everybody gets their copies, so are we looking at, like, day nine, we tend to have a special meeting? Okay, so that's special meeting.
So, you're talking about the special meeting to whittle it down to eight people?
Right. Does that make sense for everybody?
And the candidates will be numbered when we're talking about them.
Right. Okay, um, we've got four more days extra, that's Tuesday, I mean, so we have day nine to ten, special meeting, we know the candidate's down.
We'll interview within-
Interview.
Three days.
How long do we think it'll take to whittle it down to eight? An hour or longer?
I don't know, we talk longer.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I would just, if, if we could, I would love to do it just on a regular board meeting, so that more community members could watch the process.
I agree if we can, absolutely, that's my question.
Maybe we could just see if it, if it works out.
Or we'll tell David, just if he has resignation, so that it lines up.
Ask him if he has an idea, and then maybe we can hold off on picking that date until we figure out if it's close to a board meeting, that might-
Okay, so is everybody comfortable with the app being up for, what would be, seven calendar days, is that, everybody good on that?
Mm-hmm.
So, if he's officially resigned, application goes up, you just blast it out.
Right, thank you.
And so, we have that already set up so that it could go up.
Right.
Messages created for Facebook and, and what else?
Yeah, there's a fair amount of work that has to happen before this thing can go live, so that's why I wanted to get a jump on it. Okay.
And you're doing this until Friday in case we have other questions?
Right, you guys can get those to me by Friday. We're not working on open weekend. Get it tomorrow.
I think the actual interview is going to be two day process.
Yeah, well, you got, if you have eight people, every bit of two days.
We just haven't done. Just time for.
Yeah, because don't forget, we're going to have, if you take a look at the calendar I sent everybody today, you've got days there that we've got. We're starting at five thirty to accommodate Jay Bennett, and then we've got our regular business we're going to be doing, those meetings too. And we start stacking, we're going to be stacking interviews on top of those. They're not going to be ten thirty meetings, you know? So keep that in the back of your minds.
I think it's, I mean, everything I think is going to be kind of up in the air until we actually get the date and we know, you know, what the healing looks like, right? I mean, it's worth trying to.
I mean, it's December fifteenth. We've got, we've got some serious dancing to do around Christmas because state of Michigan doesn't give us an exemption for the Christmas holidays. Right. As far as that dirty day window. Okay, or anything else we want to discuss before public comment? Sean, do you see anything else we need to do to button this down? Somebody else? One, once, twice? Okay. You guys know the drill. You've got three minutes and we have the following people. Mr. Collins, you're up first.
Thank you, Derek Collins. I think that you look at your two thousand sixteen, when Lois Lenny resigned, she resigned during thirty days notice. I'm hopeful that Mr. Brumbach can do the same. Because the entire process took place in two thousand sixteen between the date she, she identified the date of her resignation and her actual resignation. The only thing that happened after her resignation was the actual vote. The application process was completed, the interview process was completed. All of that was completed before her actual resignation date, which you can do the same. If you're playing on time, that's the way you should do it. And if the vote has to come, but you can ask Mr. McInerney. Vote has to come after the actual resignation date. It happened theoretically the next day. So don't be confirmed confined by a thirty day timeline from the actual resignation date. It's a thirty day timeline from that date, yes, but you can start much of the process and complete it by your own. I mean, that's what happened in two thousand sixteen. So, I mean, I, I think that's what you need to do again. Again, assuming that Mr. Brumbach can provide a date, he has a closing date for his house, I would hope he could provide that, but again, that's up to him. But that would certainly help support the board getting most of your work done before the actual resignation date. Again, you can go back and watch it. That's exactly what happened, two thousand sixteen. In that time period, they interviewed twenty nine, uh, sorry, not twenty nine, they interviewed twenty two candidates. June twenty nine, she resigned, but on the ninth of June, by the twenty ninth of June, all the interviews were done. And on the sixth of July, they voted six days after her, the end of her resignation, so it can happen. You can do whatever you want. And I think that's the best way for it to happen. I'd also say that, I mean, I'm hopeful that whoever you choose understands that the district still has a significant budget problem facing the next year. We're three months into the fiscal year, one month into the school year, and there hasn't been any discussion yet about identifying how you're going to find four million dollars of either additional revenue or reduction of expenses. The COVID dollars have run away in June of next year. The clock is ticking. One thing that Mr. Brumbach did say that was correct back during the budget discussions was you need to be starting now to talk about how you find that money. Either you find additional revenue or you cut your expenses, right? And the time to cut expenses is not next May, like you did this year. The time to cut expenses is now, identifying what your spend is. And, I mean, I'm hopeful that that starts happening. I mean, I know we've got finance facility meetings coming up. But that's just important. We've got a headcount date that's coming up in a couple weeks. Hopefully, that's good news, not bad news, like it's been on the last few years. So there's a lot of things that, that the candidate, I think, needs to be aware of. And most importantly, we're still facing a financial crisis despite the cuts that he made this year.
Thank you. Cheryl Concistino.
Hi, is there a favor, ma'am?
You can do whatever you want, Cheryl.
I want to say I'm really glad that you guys are getting ahead of this. I'm really proud of you guys for, for being so proactive on this. I ran one time, it was many, many, many years ago, and they had like a League of Women Voters type of forum for that. And like I poured in all this time, filled out the paperwork, went to this forum, and it was horrible. They just asked everybody the same questions. They gave us like two minutes to answer the questions. We could not get into any deep answers. There was no possible way they could really get to know us and know we were qualified in that forum, because it was just a boom, boom, boom. There's like thirteen of us all sitting up. It was televised. It was terrifying. And after we went through, and I was a lot younger then, but after we went through all of that, only to find out that they had actually predetermined who was going to win, that's when Mr. Summerfield got in. And there was no way they could really get to know any other candidates because of the process being too shallow. And so I'm glad that you guys are going to take the time to interview people individually and, you know, this way people can go in more deeply into the answer. You can ask everybody the same questions, but then if they give you something, you can ask deeper questions to kind of follow up on it and get to know who's actually running. And, you know, if they meet the criteria and who's actually the most qualified. I mean, before it was like, almost like a turnstile, like, how could they even tell if we were qualified or not? The questions weren't even related to whether we were qualified or not. It was, it was just really a whole scary process, but and then as far as the felonies, okay. I wouldn't want a felon around my kids on their school board, just saying. Okay, so I would think it would be great if you would, if they'd have to be able to pass a background test. And I know that there are people who get on boards and things that are convicted felons and sometimes have serious charges. So you, this is a school. You'll be in a school, you know, you better take that pretty seriously and do a background check. That's all we have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your service, everyone.
Thanks for being here, Cheryl. It's good to see you. Kelly Bull, please.
Hello. I wanted to speak to what I thought were four important qualities that you need to consider when you're looking at someone to fill this vacancy. The first one is concerns governance. And I think you should appoint a person who has an understanding that the board is at the top of the governance chain and that the administration reports to the board and follows your direction. Second, about academics, I think this person should have ambition to steer the district back to a rigorous and academic program. Rather than lowering the academic bar, which is what has been happening over time, set a high expectation and then work to have as many children as you can reach that expectation. Third quality, I think, concerns taxpayers. I think this person who fills the vacancy should recognize that eighty percent of the residents in this district do not have children who attend the public schools and that their concerns are equally valid to those of teachers and students. So they tend to run their own families and run their own businesses, and they have an important perspective too. And the fourth point is about fiscal acumen. Since we're facing about a four million dollar budget hole, it would be important to have a person who has this quality and who's able to withstand criticism in order to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Laquisha Holder.
Good evening, all interior felder district parents. Three comments. First, I think that the greater community could have really benefited from caring in exchange of ideas and the thoughtfulness in your decision making. So I encourage you to have conversations like this, especially important conversations like this at regular board meetings. This past few days, I went to the fifth grade camp, got back at two fifteen, got my other kids, and really had to rush this meeting. So be, be thoughtful about community members and their obligations. There are a number of things going on in the district tonight and this week. And this really could have happened at the regular meeting where if you livestream or other people could be in there. Second, please provide documents that you listed on the agenda. I know that some have you hyperlink. Having a hyperlink and being able to review those documents that you were discussing would really be helpful. If you really want community engagement and public engagement, being able to review those documents as you discuss it and hear Mr. Trustee Jupe's ideas, trustee Cotton's and in other conversations and discussions on particular items that would have really been helpful, so I took notes. But having the documents in Friday would have really been helpful to know what it is, what exactly what MASP is recommending, what exactly other school districts have on their websites that we've gone from. So if you honestly have those documents, please make them available to the public. And third, one consideration that was mentioned by trustee Pappas about having longevity as a consideration. I ask that you please be mindful of longevity and any testing that or any tests or barometers that you use for longevity. Not everyone is allowed to gross points based on ratio restrictive covenants, based on the point system, based on their rank. So many people who look like me were not allowed to deliver gross points. So there's no way that we can match up against someone or families that have been here for five or six generations. So please be mindful when you think about longevity and who belongs and who has a right to serve this school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Schroder.
Yes, I like the idea of you people running the interview process versus some League of Women Voters and the other League of Voters. I think you guys can make it a little more personal. I think you can get a little more in-depth answers than having somebody with a timekeeper that flips a switch at thirty seconds to go and then cuts everybody off at the two minute mark. I think you guys are in charge. We voted for you guys. I, I like that idea very much, that you guys can run it the way you want it. And if somebody takes more than two minutes and fifteen seconds, at least you're getting the information you guys need to make your decision. The last thing I'd like to say is thanks, Dr. Bishop, for sticking around with us. Appreciate you and your family.
Thank you. Okay, that's our public comments. We had action items. I guess we should re-define what we're doing if we got through the. Two items are going to fall for our comp applications. Everybody, go with that. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, now the qualifications are registered vote in the district and a resident of the district for at least the most recent ten months.
Yep.
And then we're going to ask Mr. McInerney if we should, if we should add qualifications about criminal history.
Right.
So whatever Mr. McInerney says, I'm, I'm fine with adding that in or not.
Got it. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, six zero. Okay, as far as the application procedures. I think we've gotten that pretty well nailed down here under item three.
Do you want to add a seven day open application process?
Good idea.
As well as posting for applications the day following David Brumbah's official resignation.
We're going to post for applications the day after his resignation, although I didn't know till just now that we could do that before.
Well, you can. The only problem with it is, is that if it can't, if the first year resigning rescinds. You, you. That's why MSP recommended not to do that, but now it's up to the board.
I think we should wait until he resigns.
I think so too.
I'd like to stick with Nasty's recommendation, just, just in case.
Okay. Okay, so we're basically taking what we've got defined here under three and we're adding that we're going to post the application form the day after formal resignation, you know, be open for seven calendar days. Does that cover us?
Can you review that process?
Okay, we have support. Support, all those in favor. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Okay.
And then we're.
Questionnaire, we're going to table.
I move to table item five one three until Tuesday.
Second.
Okay. With additional questions, come with you by Friday.
And then we're going to put it on the agenda for Tuesday, right? So the public can comment.
Right. Okay, so we have that motion. Is there any questions or comments on the St. John's motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Six zero. Okay, we're now toward member comments. This is working.
I just, I have a request. Can we post somehow the questionnaires and the documents that we discussed tonight so that the members of the public can take a look at those? Is there a place we can do that?
Yeah, we have a tab set up. So you want all this information?
Well, we could, I would like us to put trustee Cotton's questionnaire and his process. And then I forwarded the MASP filling of board vacancy by appointment, that document. And then the Rochester Community Schools questionnaire, and I think Jimmy's should go up there too.
Well, I think the best way to do that then, Chris, is to take those documents and hyperlink them to this agenda. I think that's going to be the easiest way.
So how do I get that?
Right.
Email that to you, this document?
It's like a link to a hyperlink.
Right.
But I'll, I'll email these two to you, Tony.
Good.
Other than that, thank you. I don't have any other comments.
Okay, trustee Cotton.
No comments.
Trustee Jupe?
Excited for the process.
Okay, trustee Pappas.
I can forward to it as well.
Okay, trustee St. John.
I appreciate everyone having a civil and productive discussion so we could get out of here at a reasonable hour because today marks twelve years that I've been married, so I will actually get to go home and have dinner. Now to myself, Kristen.
I'm sorry, we missed Dr. Bishop and Mr. Fenton. Any closing comments?
Happy anniversary.
Our community members, thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Mr. Fenton?
No, glad the process went smooth.
Okay, I think we're on a roll here. We are a journey. Thank you, folks.